Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to Spokane City Council Agenda Review Meeting. Ms. Fister, will you call the roll?
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Zepone.
Here.
Councilmember Klitsky.
Present.
Councilmember Lambden.
Present.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you. First, we're going to start off with an interview for the Plan Commission with Kyle Metz, and come on down. Welcome, Kyle.
Hello, ma'am.
Why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in this volunteer opportunity?
A little bit about myself. Well, I usually introduce myself by saying I'm a Spokane freak.
Okay, we'll start with that.
So I just, I don't know. Ever since my family moved here when I was 14, and I've been in and out of Spokane, but back now, and I've just always, I don't know, I became obsessed, maybe, maybe it's a little bit concerning, the level of obsession I have sometimes with the city of Spokane. And I just, I really am committed to, hopefully, leaving Spokane better than I find it. I have a lot of deep love for this community, and I also recognize that it's a place where you can make a difference for good if you make an effort to do that.
Excellent, excellent. Any question from councilmembers? Councilmember Bingle.
Hey, thanks for coming here and thanks for applying, and I have a couple of questions for you.
Yeah.
How do you feel about height limits?
That's a good question. I think historically, I feel like the way that the codes have been written in the past, it feels like there's always been a need for, to justify height, and that if you, that it would, the height limit would be the lowest possible. I'm an architect, full disclosure, and there have been several projects we've worked on where we've sought, we've kind of been buddying up against the height limit in certain zones. 035 is one zone where we often find that the adjacent zones are less restrictive. I think, in a lot of ways, it should be the opposite, that we should be seeking to justify why we need a height limit, and that if there's not a justification, then we should be as unrestricted as possible.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
How do you feel about parking minimums, mandatory parking minimums?
I'm really happy with the direction that the city of Spokane has taken with parking maximums, and some of that is reflected in the Washington code as well. I think that the market is a really good determiner of the quantity of parking that's necessary, and it's the city's responsibility to ensure that, that, I think, that excess parking is not harming neighborhoods, and rarely has the inverse been true.
Councilmember Klitsky.
I have two questions.
Go for it.
You're an architect, so I have to pick on you. What is the best building in Spokane and what is the worst?
Ooh, well, the worst is honestly a tough, I mean, all of division. The best building in Spokane, I mean, like, the spokesman review tower is hard to beat, so that's probably the best.
You could have taken the fifth on that one. Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, or you could have gone, like, the pavilion or something like that, pivoted out of building to a public structure.
There we go, yeah, yeah.
That's right, you're new, we'll forgive you.
Shadle Park Tower, you know, the water tower.
That's right. Okay, so, back to the parking, though. So how, how is it, how should the city respond to mitigating neighborhood parking impacts? For example, we need fire trucks to be able to get through, we need police vehicles to be able to get through, ambulances. What, in your view, is the city's responsibility in mitigating those impacts?
That's a good question. I think that code enforcement can be an effective tool in helping mitigate some of that, in being efficient and effective in removing, you know, not permitted uses in the public right-of-way. That's a good question, you know, because as, if there is, if we meet a lot of the other infill goals, then it'll become a continued concern. I do, I definitely think that it, by removing parking minimums, it's also important that our, that working with STA to ensure that we have adequate transportation infrastructure and bicycle, you know, paths and things like that. Like, we have to do all those things together, or you end up with a lot of angry neighbors.
One last question for you. Do you think that the city should expand its boundaries?
Ooh, that's a good question. The reason that I would be hesitant to expand boundaries is because by expanding the city of Spokane's boundaries, you are expanding, you know, liability and, and infrastructure and, and expense, so I think that it'd be really important to consider the impacts that would have for the city's financial health before pursuing any expansion.
Kyle, on your application, you spoke about creating an infill and missing middle incubator.
Yeah.
Tell me a little bit about your thinking on that.
Yeah, you know, the, the residential code updates have, you know, really encouraged infill housing and middle housing development, but there's, I think, a bit of a gap in the developer network in the city of Spokane, I think, everywhere, but in the city of Spokane as well. And I think that part of that gap is a knowledge gap, and part of it is a funding gap. It's really hard to find financing for small projects, and so I think that there's an opportunity to help educate and coach people that are interested, whether it is somebody who's seeking just an ADU in their backyard, or, you know, or somebody who maybe is a small business owner, and they're seeking to get into development, but, you know, the, the hurdles are pretty high, and so you see a lot of larger developers or larger projects because the financing model works in that world.
Thank you. Any more? Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, just curious your perception, perspective on neighborhood retail.
That's, I think that it's really, again, historically, it's been very restrictive over the past 75 years, and I think that there are a lot of opportunities to expand neighborhood retail, but it has to be done very sensitively. I think even in the Emerson-Garfield neighborhood recently, there was a project that was proposed that, there was a lot of concerns on, like, is this going to be a neighborhood grocery, or is this going to be a liquor store, right? And, and the impacts of those two different businesses are very significant, and so trying to find ways to encourage neighborhood retail that, that has a positive impact on quality of life and not a negative impact on quality of life, which is a tricky balance.
But broadly speaking...
I'm supportive.
Great.
Any other council questions? Councilmember Bingle?
In your opinion, what city is planned well, or is planning well at this time?
That is a really good question, other than the city of Spokane, of course.
Right, for sure.
I think that there are a lot of very interesting case studies, and this one might be controversial. I think that Houston simultaneously is doing a lot of things very well. It's kind of, you know, like, the Wild West of planning. And so because, because they have historically had a lot less restrictions than the city of Spokane or other jurisdictions in the United States, a lot of really good things have occurred because of less regulation, also a lot of negative things have occurred because of less regulation. But it's an interesting case study for looking at, you know, like, as a laboratory for what happens when there's less regulation.
And this leaves me with my last question, because I agree with you. What is the proper balance between a city's need to plan and, you know, balance things out with people and their property rights? What's the proper balance there?
Hmm, that's also a really good question. Trying to think of a straightforward answer to this. I think that, again, there's a lot of reference to historic zoning, but in a lot of ways, I see the zoning status quo in the United States that's happened over the past 75 to 80 years as actually very restrictive, because it has limited the ability of property owners to, to build, and, you know, it's just very, very restrictive, the type, the size, the, you know, what's required, and, and a lot of ways, it's limited growth to a very, very specific type of growth. I think that, obviously, the priority should be, should be improving quality of life, and we, I guess, have an opportunity as a city to define what that means for the city of Spokane, which may be very different than, than other jurisdictions. I don't know if that was too ambiguous of an answer.
Put your answer in. Thank you.
I'll call you some other time, and we'll chat.
Yeah, we could talk about it.
Kyle, thank you for coming down here and answering our questions, and nothing else will be required of you, and barring anything, we look forward to you joining the Plan Commission.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll turn it over to Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Council President, councilmembers. Nothing for tonight's final agenda, and then, obviously, the town hall meeting on the 29th. So moving to the draft agenda for October 6th. First up, we have Luis Garcia to brief OPR 2025-0615.
Good afternoon. So this is the WashDOT agreement between the city of Spokane for encampment removal. There's a little bit of, of some maintenance thing that we do for, under that agreement, really trying to not only respond to unlawful camping, but also hopefully deter unlawful camping on WashDOT right-of-ways throughout the corporate limits.
So Luis, is this just a continuation of the one we have currently, so nothing was changed?
That's correct. So it was literally only the, the dates that were changed. I mean, we had a couple of, like, clarifying, nothing of any substance in between the conversations with us. It was basically the full thing, just with a different date. The other one had some, a different funding title on the, on the legislation, and so we changed that.
You have a councilmember Dillon?
Yeah, one thing that came up last time we discussed this was just the RV removal and that connection between a lot of the WASDA surplus land we see, particularly along I-90 and East Central, and how these two kind of interface.
Yeah, so the challenge there is that the contract's very clear that this is within WashDOT property and right-of-way, so the property would be the actual lot itself, so if there is unlawful camping occurring there, we could respond to that. They also have maintenance crews that are very responsive in those areas to say, hey, you guys can, they have signage posted letting them know that you can't, can't be on the property because it is vacant. A lot of the activities that we see of the RVs are actually on the right-of-way that's still assigned to city. So that's the challenge that we have with those, is that we, this wouldn't be applicable under this contract. It's still our local response to the RV unlawful camping.
Any questions for Luis? All right, thank you very much, sir.
Next up, I believe, since I don't see Carrie Cedarquiss, Ariel, are you here to cover? Okay. Ariel Anderson will brief OPR 2025-0648.
Good afternoon, council. Thank you very much, Council President. This is just in, so just some, a brief background, so historically, how Commerce has awarded our city eviction prevention funds is directly in contract with, with the state. That has since changed, and it changed fairly, you know, quickly in this grand scheme of things. And so that funding now is flowing through Spokane County. Spokane County has, in good faith, kept that 3.4 number the same, that is what we had had in the previous round, and I say that only to acknowledge the fact that they could take out a certain percentage of, you know, admin fees, because they're, they're going to have to monitor us. So this just will allow us to take that 3.4 and then put that out to the community with subrecipients. So any questions on that?
So they're contracting with providers to dispense this money for eviction persistence, assistance?
So they are giving our portion, that's that 3.4 million, and then we, in turn, can, you know, we have put that out in an RFP for, for future contracts.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Bingle?
And, so what are the organizations that are getting the money?
Well, right now, we have an RFP that's out to elicit, you know, applications. Prior, so we had specifically for the homeless prevention, and I do want to acknowledge that Commerce has since changed that language, they're no longer calling it eviction prevention, now it's homeless prevention. So Family Promise has been a recipient, New Estros Rice has been a recipient, Carl Maxi, SNAP, Catholic Charities, I want to say that that, I feel like I'm probably missing one, but I think that's...
I think Transitions might have been the other one.
Oh, yes, and Transitions, yep. Thank you.
And so this is just basically our agreement with the county? It's not actually giving any money to anybody?
No, nope. Thank you. Nope, yes.
Any other questions for her? All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ariel. Next up, Chief Julio Berg to brief SBO C36760.
Afternoon, council. This SBO, we were awarded funding from the East Region EMS Council in the amount of $46,750 that went towards some programming for different SUD things that we'd already done. We're able to offset that. We wanted to transfer this to go towards our paramedic training. We have four firefighters that are beginning paramedic school next month, and this will help offset the, the cost of, of that paramedic training.
Chief, we had started to do paramedic training as part of our recruitment for firefighters because this was such an additional cost and time. Did we merge that in with our training?
EMT training, we are doing. If, if, if they are not coming with their EMT certification, that is the last five weeks of the Recruit Academy, but paramedic training is, is an additional certification above EMT.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
And moving to police, Chief Coles to brief SBO C36761.
Good afternoon, thanks for having me back. This is the SBO for a JAG grant awarded to us for $76,478 for equipment and training. Yes, ma'am?
Just want to speak to what the red dot thing is, because it was a topic of conversation.
Yeah, so traditional sites are called iron sites, that's what my personal, or my issued firearm has. These sites, I believe, are also sites for a pistol, and it, it requires modification of the pistol and the mounting of the site. The reason why this site is advantaged is it projects a red dot on a glass screen, and it allows for more efficient and more accurate acquisition of a target and delivery of force on that target.
Great. Any other questions? I was probably the only one who didn't get it, but thank you for that.
Oh, my pleasure. All right, thank you.
Not playing enough Call of Duty, Council President. All right, next up, we have Marlene Feist to brief Resolution 2025-0059.
You don't actually have Marlene, you have me. So there's three public rules that you've asked for briefings on. This is the first one. Can I do all three together? Please?
Yes, all three of the Marleens, I assume.
Okay. This is the public rule, an update to the water and the wastewater GFCs, and I think Mr. Wright circulated an amendment this afternoon that would add in an affordable housing provision or maintenance and habitability provision. This was briefed a number of times, most recently at the last PICE meeting by Ms. Feist, and it's basically adding in, the legislature under 3592385 set up a, a potential waiver of GFC charges for low-income housing, as long as there was a covenant attached to that. So this is an update to, that's consistent with that. Any questions on that? No?
Seeing none?
Council, I'll brief you all on the amendment later.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wright.
And then, the Resolution 20250077 is a resolution regarding the amendment of the city of Spokane's water and hydroelectric rules and regulations of the water system installations. And just to remind everybody that these public rules were all briefed at the PICE. They're basically, we're bringing them forward for public process, so they'll go through the city council process. These are things that we've had on the books and in the city system for a number of years with regards to the water system installations. It's how people connect into our water system, and we're memorializing those, bringing them through for transparency and accountability through the public rule process. And the next one is Resolution 20250078, which is the wastewater management department for site sewer installation handbook, and this is the, very similar to the water side, this is how people connect into our wastewater system.
Any questions? Seeing none? Thank you, Libby.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Libby. Next up, moving back up to Resolution 2025-0069, and Eldon Brown.
Good afternoon. This is a proposed vacation in the northeast part of town. It's an alley between Freya and Sickamore from Columbia to Central. This is one of them that we're trying to finalize a vacation through the non-user statute, which means you have to meet three criteria. Had to be platted prior to March 11th, 1904, had to be unopened for a period of five years when it was platted, and also had to be in the county for a period of five years before it ever got annexed into the city, and it did get annexed in 1907. So it meets all the criteria, and basically with that, we're pretty much required to do a non-user statute at a no cost, once you meet all that criteria. We do not have any city utilities in the alleys. I think Comcast, Vista, and Lumen all had utilities that they want to actually retain easements for, once it's vacated. Those were the conditions we pretty much had. Any questions?
Councilmember Bingle?
Who's asking for the vacation?
Just the adjoining property owners, which we had 100% on the petition. They just basically want to consolidate it for, I think, mostly for safety purposes at this point in time, just don't want people roaming up and down the alleys.
Okay, you have any questions? Thank you.
All right, the next two items will be briefed by Kevin Freibot. Those are Resolution 2025-0075 and 0076.
Good afternoon, Council President, members of the council. These are the two items that I briefed last at the September 8th Urban Experience. We have one private request for West Quadrant Tiff funds, and we have one department request for some improvements in West Central. Nothing has changed. I haven't received any comments or any updates on these, so I'm happy to answer any questions. Great, thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Next up, jumping down to Abigail Martin, who will brief Resolution 2025-0079.
Good afternoon, Council President, councilmembers. This is, you're wearing your hat as the Transportation Benefit District Board, and I'm wearing my hat as your Transportation Benefit District Administrator. These are the recommendations made by the Transportation Commission for your approval, and I can repeat those locations if you'd like me to.
Any requests for repeated locations? All right, seeing none? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Tim Thompson to brief Resolution 2025-0080.
Thank you, council. Good afternoon, Tim Thompson here. This is an item recognizing, a resolution recognizing the Hilliard Subarea Plan, and happy to answer any questions. I know I briefed this ad nauseam, probably at the, at your committee meeting, but happy to answer any questions.
You have questions for Tim? Thanks for walking down.
Great, thank you.
And then, Libby, did we miss one other Marlene item?
So this is the developer agreement that was briefed on the PICE committee last week, basically for a regional wastewater pump station in the Lower Terrace Seven Mile area in northwest Spokane. Just briefly, a private developer will be constructing that. The city's going to reimburse the developer for approximately eight, well, for $8.9 million over approximately eight years. That's excess of the developer's costs, of what the developer would be required to construct for their 1,240 residential units. Total build-out for the facility would be about 5,100 units. Any questions on that? I do have a resolution. It hasn't actually been put before council. We were drafting it, having done a lot of developer agreements, so it was a little late to the party to realize that we had to have a resolution, so we pulled it off the consent agenda last week and put it on the resolution, so there'll be a hearing on October 6th.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Bingle.
I apologize, I sneezed when you said the amount. And so what's the amount that we're paying them back on this?
We're paying, it's a not-to-exceed amount of $8 million. So it's a flat rate. So under state law, R C W 3592, if a developer comes to the city and says, hey, I want to build, and I want you to, you know, to do a late comer agreement or some sort of reimbursement area, then the city's kind of obligated to do that if the developer comes forth with viable plans. This developer has done that. So instead of going through that whole process and doing late comer agreements, we had internal analysis and external analysis and came up with an amount that represents roughly 75% because it's a regional pump station, not an individual development pump station. And so that's where we landed on that amount.
Any other question? And to be paid back over eight years?
Yes. We're going to do a down payment, and then there'll be an interest assessed with that, which is 4.75%. And we'll do approximately $500,000 payments twice a year. We expect to use GFC revenues for that. We're also working with finance on possible short-term obligations to kind of get in and pay it off early because there's no penalty to pay it off early.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Adam McDaniel. And I'll ask you to brief both the Director of Accounting Ordinance and the Technical Corrections Ordinance.
Council members, both are technical corrections. The first one just fixes the accounting department name throughout the code. The second one relates to development services. It's referred to as Development Services Center and Building Services Department to the code. It just cleans it up and refers to the Development Services Department throughout.
Councilor Bingle.
So both of these are just like, it was incorrectly named in another piece of the code, and we're going through and fixing all that?
That's correct.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
And next, Mr. Wright will be briefing a number of things. And go for it.
Thank you. Counsel, the first item is Ordinance C 36732, which we all knew as the HART ordinance. You adopted an amendment last week. Did a number of things. Among them, we changed what the meaning of HART was. We changed the split from 7525 to 7030 with some room to maneuver. And added a reference to the Legal Services Relocation Fund, added a housing disparity component, and document production requirements for council consideration of awards, restored the sunset clause. And as I say, you adopted that last week. I'm not sure any more briefing needs to happen on it, but I'm happy to respond to any questions.
I see none. Go, Mr. Wright.
The other item, thank you. The other item is Ordinance C 36733, the Affordable Housing Permit Fee Deferral Program. Also, you amended it last week. That one, the amendment had a correction to one of the SMC citations and included an affordable housing requirement, clarified that there was an affordable housing requirement for units seeking permit deferrals. Also conformed the HART name to match 36732. And then we added a definition for the HUD Home Program.
Seeing no questions? Thank you.
Thank you. The next item that you're, I think, all familiar with, Ordinance C 36738. This is an ordinance, still in blank, but proposes to change the day of regular meetings as Spokane City Council. And council recently conducted a survey. And I think Lisa Gardner is prepared to talk about the survey results.
Council President and Council, we do have a survey that we conducted. We started last, well, two weeks ago that we opened up the survey, and we closed it this morning at 10:00 a.m. And we have 270 responses. And we have it up here. So the first question was, do you attend the 6 o'clock session? And majority of them did say yes, that they did attend, with 59.2%. And 267 responses out of the 270. Next slide, yes. How frequently do you attend the city council's 6:00 p.m. legislative sessions? And sometimes, 33%. Every Monday was a low 14.4%. The next one, should council keep the legislative meetings on Monday nights? Majority said yes at 60%, and that's 256 responses. And then which day would you prefer to attend the council's 6:00 p.m. legislative session? 145 said Monday nights, which would be 58% out of 249 responses. And then should council consider bi-weekly meetings? Overwhelmingly no, 259 responses. And then what are your primary reasons for attending? There were several pages of it, but the majority was to stay informed with council and city initiatives. And how do you typically stay informed with city council? Activities and decisions, the majority said local TV, newspaper, and radio, which makes my heart happy because that is my primary way of communicating with our public. And that pretty much is the survey results. Any questions?
Councilor McCaffrey?
Yeah, I guess my, and the survey results support sort of my position, if you will. But my only challenge with the survey was, you know, we were very specific in asking, do you attend? But some people watch. And I just don't know, did we capture the people who watched the meetings? And was that a perspective that was considered? And I think there's just, there could have been a few contextual type things, like on the bi-weekly, you know, I think if we explained sort of how that would work, you know, would there be a different perception? I'm not sure. But my question, though, is, so what would be the next steps? If there is still interest by council to pursue this, what would be the next steps?
Councilmember Zepone?
Well, I think the next step is just a normal, I think that's up to council sponsors to determine next steps. I don't think it's a staff thing, like normal continued outreach or bring it forward or whatever. I had a question on this. One of my constituents brought up that the survey did not cap the number of times that people can fill out. I just wanted to confirm that was correct, that someone could fill it out. Unlimited number of times, and that person, we had no way of tracking, like, an email address or something, or how they filled it out. So we don't know how many times one person may be filled out the survey.
That is true.
Right. All right. Councilor Bingle?
I just have a confession that 250 of the 260 were me, but...
That's what I thought. All right. Councilmember Dylan?
I want to know who the 13 that wants to meet on Friday.
Councilman McClitzky?
I think I know who that was, and I can tell you, he was trying to make a point, and he did actually bring up at a neighborhood council meeting that you can take the survey multiple times and told us not to trust the survey. And then I asked people what day, and he said Friday, and everyone laughed.
Well, thank you. I just want to say, we were just trying to get a pulse or a point of information from us as to really what we thought the consideration was among our residents. Councilmember Zepone?
Yeah, I know for, this is one data point of many data points, but to kind of, Councilmember McCaffrey's question, like, what other, what's the next steps? I know I've been bringing it up at every neighborhood council meeting. I think Councilmember McClitzky has for our districts this month. And that's another data point, additional people. And I've had a lot of people not concerned about switching days. As the feedback that I'm getting from my neighborhood councils, some really feel strongly that we should switch it, and some are kind of apathetic. But my neighborhood councils definitely are a different data point of many. And I think your point is, how do we just do enough outreach to feel comfortable to move forward? And I think that's up to council to decide or not move forward.
Thank you, Councilor Bingle.
Yeah, I guess what's the point of us having a staff member do a survey if we're just going to say that's a bonk survey? I just don't understand the point of that. Can somebody help you understand that?
I think it was a starting point. We do surveys all the time. I think the next is to, since we don't know how many people responded to the survey, so that balance or lack of balance thereof, I think some in-person engagement. I will say I've spoken, brought this up many times at community assembly and had the same responses as Councilmembers Zepone. Some people say, mm. So I don't know how many took the survey. So really, it's a starting point. Councilmember McCaffrey, then Councilor Bingle.
Well, I would say, based on survey responses there, right? Where 60% say we should leave it on a Monday, and 40% say maybe we should move it, that three out of the five times you're talking to people, you're going to hear them say, no, leave it on a Monday. And two out of the five, you're going to hear people say, hey, maybe we should move it to another day, which might feel like every other person, but it's not necessarily every other person. And I think the 60/40 is an important split for us to understand as we're going through it. And you can say, like, we have no idea how many times a person took a survey in there. And I can understand it, but I don't know about you, but if I decide to take a survey, I'm not taking it more than once.
Councilman McCaffrey? And then Councilman McClitzky?
Yeah, I also think if we're going to make this point about the survey being taken multiple times, that we need to have that be a standard when it comes to all surveys. The climate change surveys, the racially disparate surveys, all these things that I have had big frustrations with how they're worded. But the potential for manipulating those exists just the same as this. So we need to be consistent, I think, on that. There were a number of folks who said Tuesday is the alternative, but there was zero question in there about if you knew a council member, a sitting council member, could not attend on a particular day, would you? So I mean, there's just so much context that's just absent from that survey and the input. I do think it's a very big change, and I do think there needs to be a big public outreach effort before we take a decision. I know this is already scheduled for a vote in October, which is a little frightening to me, but I'm hoping that'll get deferred as we hopefully do some more outreach. But I just think there's a lot of questions that we can pose to the public, be it in a new survey or in person or whatever that might be, to help clarify the overall.
Councilman McClitzky?
I was just going to tell Councilmember Bingle, when you do ask a group, most of them just sit there silently and stare at you. That's been my experience. There's not a lot of passion around this issue that I have seen. And like I said, I'm reporting what a constituent told me about his experience taking the survey, and I think he was the 13 Fridays.
Councilman Bingle?
And so I would say on that, if there's not a lot of passion around this issue, I think that demonstrates that it's not a community asking us for a change here. I think it seems to be very council-led in this effort. And so I'm not necessarily sure that it's something that we're responding to people out in the public so much as we're wanting them to agree with us.
Councilmember Zepone?
Yeah, I would just also bring up, I've had constituents reach out. Again, they've told me this straight up, that they believe that council members should be responsible for finding childcare when they need to find childcare. And that was not a question that was asked. It was just brought up from conversation. So again, lots of people have lots of different opinions. There are other community groups have said that, you know, they struggle with the agendas on a Monday. And there's been organizations that have brought that up. And again, Association of Washington Cities, this is a topic that has been talked about with council members across the board. And there's been a general trend of moving to Tuesdays. And actually, Thursdays is kind of what they were talking about. Not as many on Wednesdays. It's kind of the trend. And also just staff being prepared on Mondays after a weekend when something comes up on Friday and not being prepared for council meetings. So a lot of it is internal operations.
It is. Councilman McCaffrey?
Yeah, except for one or more council members up here, I've not had a single person in the community. And I don't bring this up because there's too many other big things that I'm thinking about. But nobody proactively has brought this up to me. And I can guarantee you that no one struggling or having issues out there is thinking, if we could just change that darn day, these things will be resolved. I know that's not the case. And as far as, you know, middle of the week, maybe that would be more convenient, but we all knew what we signed up for when we ran. But also, there are so many competing events on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, not to mention some of the folks who participate here, participate in county-type things and valley-type things. And so you start to cross over on those, and it makes it really hard to be a more, a better regional partner, in my mind. But you've got Kiwanis and Rotaries and all these things that also meet often on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursdays, far more at least than Mondays are utilized. And so I think we've got the sweet spot personally.
Thank you. I know Jacoby had done a spreadsheet of other meetings that we are obligated to attend our boards and commissions. So what that looks like, let's be real, this was a continuation from last year. We had talked about this. So it's not like, eh, where'd this come from? So we'll continue engagement. And really, a lot of it is about how we conduct business. The priority of the city is doing business and the challenges that sometimes money presents. So we will continue to go forward and see where this leads us. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, council. Just on that last ordinance, let me point out that it's set for first reading on October 6th, final reading on October 20th. It cannot be passed in its current form because it's in blank. So it will need an amendment if it's going to be voted on. And amendments ostensibly are due this Wednesday.
Thank you.
Last item for me to brief would be my favorite ordinance that you've heard me talk about, the one relating to adoption of public rules. An amendment has been drafted. I've asked some key folks to weigh in on whether the refinements meet their needs. I'm hoping you'll actually see it midweek this week on that, so...
All right. Last but not least, Tim Zambler is here to brief ordinances C 36762 and 763.
Good afternoon, council and council president. Ordinance C 36762 is basically a renewal of Level 3 Telecom of Washington. It's for 10 years. And they were purchased by Lumen, and so are they're a subsidiary of Lumen. But just a pretty mature, straightforward fiber franchise agreement. Ordinance C 36763 is another fiber franchise with Forge Fiber 37 LLC. They're a subsidiary of AT&amp;T Fiber Division, and they purchase existing fiber from Lumen. So you see a lot of horse trading in fiber nowadays and some of the renewals. Any questions?
Tim, what is the city's, what is our funding source from this? From this contractual agreements? What type of financial benefit does the city get?
They have a, we get utility tax from the fiber usage. Also, there's a franchise application fee of $3,000 to cover our costs of putting this through the system.
Thank you. Councilor Bingle?
Yeah, but there's no, like, money that we get every year for, you know, their...
Correct.
Yeah.
It's different than like our pipeline franchises that was just before you a couple of weeks ago. And also, a cable franchise, you get a percentage. So in the telecom world, it's kind of ruled by the Telecom Act of 1996 and state regulation and federal regulation. It kind of ties our hands.
Councilman McCaffrey?
Yeah, but what about the ordinance that we passed, I think, what, in 2023 with regards to broadband infrastructure? Does that not apply here?
The, that ordinance?
Yeah. Because the whole point of that was to help monetize the existing fiber and conduit that we have in the city.
Our fiber and conduit?
Did I mishear you? I thought you said they were going to use our fiber.
No, no.
Oh, okay.
This is all private. They're just in the public right away, so...
All right, that clarifies.
Thank you, Councilor Bingle.
But to Councilmember McCaffrey's point, right? So the, they're not using, they're not using our cables, but are they using the conduit to get through it?
Yep. I would say these franchises were put in probably about 20 years ago. And it was not our conduit. It was private conduit by like Level 3. But we now have conduit, and Les Martinez and his group are doing a great job in leasing out space in our conduit if there is space. So we are getting revenue that way.
All right, thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
All right, I think that lets you off the hook. Mr. Wright?
Thank you, Council President. The first item for consideration relates to tonight's agenda. Consent item number nine. This is the Inland Asphalt Company contract for the Spreg Alki Broadway Grind and Overlay. We've deferred this a number of times. We've deferred this a number of times. They're asking for one more deferral for consideration on October 6th. I can tell you that I've seen the contract amendments. They will save some money, so by waiting, we'll get a little bit of a savings out of this. And council should see the actual contracts circulated and added to the agenda later this week, so.
So moved.
It's been moved, is there a second to extend?
Second.
Then second by Councilmember Lambden. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes, abstentions? That is deferred to October 6th.
Thank you, council. The next item relates to four items from CHHS. They're requesting that they be added to the agenda tonight. And the first is Consent Item Number 10, you'll see on the agenda, Contract Amendment with Washington State Healthcare Authority for Street Medicine. Next item is OPR 1003, Contract Amendment with CHAZ for Street Medicine. The next item is a Special Budget Ordinance C36759 to extend the funding from Washington State Healthcare Authority for the Street Medicine Grant. And the final item is Resolution 20250081, Approval and endorsement of funding for contracts for the Navigation Center and Street Outreach.
First, I'll ask for a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
It's been moved to a second. Then moved in second to suspend the rules. For the purposes of these, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes?
No.
That the rule, Councilmember Kat Carte?
I will make a motion that we suspend the rules for considering OPR 2024-0634, 2024-1003, and Special Budget Ordinance C36759.
Yeah, I'm trying to follow here.
Exactly. So it was, we were suspending the rules, there was a motion and a second to suspend the rules. I believe that was five to two for the rule suspension. Is that what you got, Ms. Fister? So then we had Councilmember Kat Carte come back and ask for a rule suspension for the three identified items excluding Resolution 0081. Councilman Kat Carte.
So the rule suspension passed, is that what you're saying?
The rule suspension did pass to include all the four items, yes.
Okay. So I misunderstood. I did not think that CM Lambden could vote on the rule suspension.
She can vote on the rule suspension. I believe there would be a conflict of her voting on the contracts. That was our advice from legal.
Okay.
So with that being said, I know there were some questions around these items. We do have, Councilmembers opposed?
I believe we need a motion to add it before we can discuss it, so.
Yes, it's a motion to add the four items to tonight's agenda.
I'll move to add those four items, OPR 2024-0634, OPR 2024-1003, Special Budget Ordinance C36759, and Resolution 20250081 to the agenda for tonight's agenda.
There's a motion and a second.
Second.
It's been moved in second. I see, Councilman Kat Carte?
Yeah, I guess I'm pretty frustrated and disappointed. I've gotten there on three of these, but not four, and this will kind of make me vote no, which is very unfortunate because I had intended to vote yes.
Do we need clarification on the, I do have Dawn and Ariel in the room. If their council needs clarification on any of these four items that are coming before So on Resolution 0081, that was your concern, Councilman Kat Carte?
Yeah.
Could you speak to that, Ariel?
And which one is that specifically?
I believe that's the Navigation Center.
Oh, okay. Sure. I can, what question specifically?
I don't have any questions, I just concerns over the conversion to a so-called daytime navigation center. I don't understand how that could be a navigation center for shutting it down at night.
Well, I think what we saw is that the, you know, the 30-bed reduction overall in the system would be easily absorbed by way of the scattered sites that we currently have up. And then, I mean, that was, you know, really the idea with the navigation center generally. Yes, we had those 30 beds, but we also had this daytime navigation center that was also a big part of that overall mission at Cannon Street Shelter. So I think the mission kind of, you know, remains the same with the caveat that I think it's going to be even stronger now. I think part of the initial confusion was that we had the 30 beds, but then it was also this daytime drop-in center, right? I think removing the beds allows us to just solely focus on the fact that this is a daytime navigation center. That coupled with that partnership and that collaboration that's going to take place with the street outreach provider, that also is before council for a determination, is just going to make it that much stronger. So that relationship is important. But then, in addition to that, just making sure that the folks that are unsheltered during the day can have a place that they can go during the day and either do laundry, you know, get some light snacks, engage with the case managers that are going to be on site to talk about what is your exit strategy from being unsheltered, so.
Yeah, all well and good. I just, I guess my perception, you know, having seen the navigation center system in Houston, is just different than how we're perceiving it here. And I don't entirely understand how the loss of beds is helping the system, because we've lost quite a number of beds over time.
I don't think it is a loss of beds overall. I mean, there are 30 beds that are no longer going to be at Cannon, but those will be absorbed by way of other scattered sites, so.
And when do we vote on the scattered sites? Because I believe those have expired, correct?
Yeah, so end of October, they will come before council.
So Ariel, I have a question with the Cannon. I know the back part of the building was where they were actually sleeping. So will the whole building be used as a day navigation center?
It will. And we're going to have, we're going to actually have a kind of a sketch of what that layout should, you know, is going to look like, because that's going to, you know, I think fundamentally change now that you don't have folks, you know, staying there temporarily in emergency shelter. The use of that space will also change, so.
I just want to add one thing, too. Part of it is that the beds take up a substantial amount of space, which reduces our daytime capacity in that facility. By making that shift, we're actually able to serve more people during the day, which gives us a greater access to connect to more individuals, including this partnership with the street outreach team. So there's actually some capacity gain in the shift.
Councilmember Dillon.
I think one just additional point to this, too, is that, and the reason for the timing, if I understand correctly, is that with that scatter site contract coming up at the end of October is to have this running in tandem with each other, so there is that more seamless transition to address, I think, the gap.
That's correct. Thank you, councilmember.
Councilmember Kat Carte?
Yeah, and then maybe you can help me, because again, we don't have those contracts, so I just don't have the information. But how will they absorb these 30 beds? Are each of them going to expand individually, or are we going to add more scattered sites? How is that going to work?
So those are all things that are under discussion. There's also, you know, this simultaneous process going on around a small, tiny home community that would also replace some of those beds, particularly for recovery folks and folks coming out of the ERP site. So there's a myriad of places where those additions are coming into the community that will replace those beds lost. The timing will not be, you know, perfect, but the community of partners sees great value in this shift. So we feel confident that we'll have a net gain in daytime capacity without a long-term reduction in bed capacity.
Ariel, I know you shared with me earlier today that a number of the folks at the Cannon shelter have already been rehoused. And so what is the number at the shelter now as we get ready to close it down?
Sure. So there's five individuals that are left. Four of those individuals have a permanent housing destination. One is still up in the air about what they want to do.
So those folks have already been absorbed, for lack of a better term.
That's correct. So they're actually--
Into the system.
Yep.
All right. Can you, Councilman Bingle?
Yeah. So what happens now if the contracts expired with the scattered sites?
I'm sorry, what?
If the contracts with the scattered sites are expired, what happens?
So they have not expired yet. They expire on September 30th. And the resolution that would come before you would continue us with a 10-1 start date so that we could reimburse those agencies for costs during that one-month window. Obviously, if council chose not to renew any of those contracts, we'd lose about 200-and-so beds.
So also with that, when it expires, that terminates our contractual agreement with Waters Meat as well, because they were managing the scattered site for us?
Yeah, that's correct. And we made that decision in consultation with Waters Meat to save about half a million dollars a year.
Okay, administrative costs. Councilmembers opposed, then Councilman Bingle?
Yeah, I was just wondering if you could speak to the urgency, I guess, why it needs to be suspended and approved on this timeline and not later?
Yeah, so when we brought the timeline before council, we were not aware that the next week is a town hall, and so no legislative action would be taken. And we are trying to open Cannon on October 6th with a one-week closure to allow for the turnover between Revive and the incoming operator. When we learned about the town hall, we requested it be moved up so that we're not delaying the actual opening of the facility. If we have to delay vote until October 6th, we'll be substantially delaying the open because we can't have somebody receive keys and start working in the facility without your permission.
And it was my understanding, too, that you tried to get it on an earlier committee to try to expedite that, too. Is that?
That was the healthcare authority contract we tried to get earlier in the process and were told to wait.
Any, Councilman Bingle?
Yeah, just on the healthcare authority contract portion, because I was the chair of that committee, and we talked about that. And my understanding was that there was no rush on that, and it was going to be fine if we delayed it. And the point was that we knew the contract was coming to expire, and so we didn't want to expedite something when the healthcare authority knew that it was coming far in advance.
I think, though, just to underline, is that that is the purpose of us asking right now, is opposed and then delaying until October 6th, right? So.
Any other questions? So after all that discussion, we have suspended the rules, we have motioned to add them to tonight's agenda. Then, Councilman Bingle?
I have a question for Mr. Wright on this, because I hadn't even thought about it until Mr. Kat Carte said it. But with Councilmember Lambden being a part of this organization, can she even vote to suspend the rules for the purpose of adding these items?
She can vote, yes. I did check with legal, we had a conversation about it. We feel that this is a change to the agenda, it's not a vote on the actual item, it doesn't present any special conflict for her to vote on a procedural item.
Councilman Kat Carte?
Well, one clarified, I don't want to belabor this because I think we're going to move on, but if it wouldn't pass but for, does that not make a difference?
I don't know that it does, in my mind. It's a procedural vote, it's not a vote on the merits.
Okay.
Move in second to add all four items to tonight's agenda. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes?
No.
I think a six to one, thank you. Mr. Wright?
What was the count on that?
I thought it was six to one. Five to two? Five to two? All right, five to two.
And so, just a point of information on that, so also can vote to add it to the agenda early?
I'm sorry, what's your question?
Councilmember Lambden also can add, not just to suspend the rules, but to add it to the agenda early.
Correct, it's a procedural item. As long as, yeah, as long as it's not a vote on the merits, so.
Well, I mean, I would just say, I think that we need to revisit that, because two weeks can do a lot. I mean, we're about to, tonight, we're going to hear a point about, you know, a vacation, about a school, and we're delaying it a little bit, and two weeks can mean a lot. And so a vote to move something up a couple weeks, I think, can change the outcome of one of those, of the vote. And so I would ask our legal for an actual legal memo on that.
I'll take care of that.
Thank you.
Final item relates to the agenda for October 6th. This relates to Resolution 20250059. We just heard from Libby Shadle regarding the proposed public rule for wastewater and general GFC charges and incentives for nonprofit or low-income housing. Councilmember Kat Carte proposed an amendment quite some time ago that would add a requirement that for any covenant that gets recorded in connection with these GFC waivers, that there would be a promise to keep them habitable. And council deferred this item for a couple weeks to allow discussions to transpire with the administration. Those discussions did occur, and at 2:44 today, I circulated a newer version of the Kat Carte amendment that has the blessing of legal and Ms. Feist. And basically, what it does is add the habitability requirement. It just took out some of the language that the original amendment had relating to enforcement because it wasn't needed and probably conflicted with state law, so.
Councilman Kat Carte?
Yeah, council president, I'll make a motion to adopt the Kat Carte amendment as distributed this afternoon to Resolution 2025-0059.
I think we need a motion to suspend the rules because--
The rules are suspended. That was a blanket suspension, there was no clarification.
The rules--
I thought it was just on the four.
The rules were suspended only for the four items.
That was not clarified. I'll ask for a ruling of the chair, but that was not clarified.
That was the intention, Councilmember Kat Carte, to take them as a block, those That was the chair's ruling, that it would be those four items, because we then voted on that suspension, and that's when you came back and you wanted to amend it to not include 0081. But we had already suspended the rules for the purpose of those four. So at this point, I would entertain a rule suspension for 005, for the purposes of 0059 to be added to the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to that.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved in second to suspend the rules for the purposes of adding Resolution All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Rules are suspended. I'll entertain a motion for adding.
So moved the Kat Carte amendment.
Second.
It's been moved in second to Kat Carte amended--
Number two circulated at 2:44.
That was circulated at, what's the specific time? 2:44.
2:44.
All those in favor of the amendment circulated at 2:44, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes, abstentions? That is added to the agenda. Thank you.
We just need one final motion to approve the agenda--
I'll entertain a motion for approval of agendas.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of agenda amendments approval, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes?
No.
Abstentions? I believe that was a six to one. Minutes are approved. We are in recess until 6:00 PM. Thank you very much.